Good evening, folks. Welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. Let the record show that all the committee members are present save for the birthday boy, Alderman Swanson. Proud to call this meeting to order and jump right into item one and the only item, which is the presentation and discussion regarding updates to Title IX Municipal Utilities of the Geneva City Code. With that, I'm going to introduce and welcome to the podium our Finance Director Rita Cruz, who's going to provide us some information. There is no action being taken tonight, but of course, as always, we encourage questions to both Rita and our Superintendent, Mr. Van Gescam.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about the Title IX changes that Public Works and Finance has been spending some time reviewing the code and looking for any necessary changes due to processes or technologies. So first, I'd like to go through the agenda. First, I'm going to talk about utility billing changes, because that would be more in the finance side of things, processes and procedures we have. Bob will talk about the future water and sewer rates, and he'll also talk about the sewer grant program. So the first utility billing change I'd like to talk about would be utility deposits. So right now, we have a requirement in our city code that says that there shall be a $100 deposit for residential and a $250 deposit for commercial per service. So if you're in a single-family home, that would be $200, because you had one for water and one for electric. That deposit is waived if the customer does have credit history with the city of Geneva. Credit history being two years of positive credit history on another account within the past five years. Also, we do not charge deposits for landlords, because typically, a landlord is on an account between going from a renter to renter, and to attempt to collect the deposit, it's very difficult, so we do not do that. Deposits are refunded with the customers with two years of satisfactory payment history. The city sends second notices and final notices if the deposit's not been paid. If not, then we will terminate the service if needed. My proposal tonight is to remove the deposits from the city code, which would also refund back the deposits that are currently on account. So as of right now, we have 15% of our customers that have a deposit. The reason why I'm asking for this is customer inconvenience. One thing that we hear a lot from our customers is because of everything being online, is they cannot pay this deposit online. Our financial software does not allow you to pay it online. It is a kind of subsection of our software internally, so they have two choices. They can call, use their credit card, or they can send a check, or come in and pay cash. So it is very inconvenient for them. Plus, we do send them a letter that says, "Welcome to the city of Geneva. Here's your deposit amount." Secondly, is staff time. It's $134 and two and a half hours of processing to send 50 letters bi-weekly. 50 is about the average we do for turnaround for new accounts, and that does not include the cost for collections, which can vary, because some people will turn around and pay that deposit the moment, and all I'm doing is receipting that money, or there could be a second notice, a final notice, and other things we've talked about. And this process is entirely manual for staff, so it is not just a click of a button and go. We're doing mail merges and things like that to make this process work, so it is very time prohibitive. So next, we have this disconnection of service for non-payment. Currently, the turn-on fee is based upon the time of the reconnection. So there's a $75 fee from 7:00 a.m. to 2:29 p.m., $150 from 2:30 p.m. to 11:59 p.m., $200 from midnight to 6:59 a.m. during the week, city holidays, and weekends. So the proposed fee would be a $75 fee incurred at the time of dispatch. We typically dispatch Public Works around 9:00 in the morning, Finance goes to get everything out of the boxes, we open up the mail to ensure that no one else has made that payment, and then we send the list over to Public Works to go send out their electric staff to disconnect. We'd also change the fee for 2:30 to 10:30 to $250. No reconnection fees, or no reconnection at all, between 10:01 p.m. and 6:59 a.m., and $300 for a city holiday weekend, holidays and weekends. The reason being is that for the past 10 years, we have never turned anyone back on between midnight and 7:00 a.m. So it really is a function that's never been used, and the increase in the cost of 250 is because our actual labor and vehicle cost is 275 for an after-hours turn-on. So we're trying to do more cost recovery and also streamline the process. So next would be the manual reading fee. So currently, we charge $75 for anyone that wants to opt-out of an electric meter or an ert, but that is only in the water code. That is not in the section for electric. So what I'm proposing to do is to move that opt-out fee up into Section 39A, which is more of the billing procedures, which applies to both water and electric, not just water, to be able to cover both utilities and make that equitable. Right now, if you do have a property that has both a non-erted water and a non-erted electric, I do not charge 150, or I would not charge 150, I'd only charge 75, because it's really the cost of that person to take their time out of the day, go to Public Works, read the meter, come back, and upload that read into the software. So next would be penalties. Currently, the city waives two penalties per calendar year, and the customer can choose. This is very interesting, because there are customers that know this, and they will call in September and say, "I want the two highest ones waived." So they'll go back, and they know, really, their summer periods, right, is their highest bill. They'll go ask for those waived to be coming back. So it's a little bit harder for us to go out there, to figure out which penalty that they're actually wanting waived, to find the two highest, to then actually make that penalty waiver. So what we're proposing is to do one penalty per year, which would be the most recent penalty. So when we go online, whatever you just received, that's where we will reduce. And that would be beginning on 1/1/24, because obviously, we're right in the middle of 23. I can't change anything in between, so we will not do that. Other communities waive one per lifetime, one per account, or one per year. So I did kind of take a survey around here, no one does two a year. In calendar year '22, the city waived $150,000 of penalties for 916 customers, which is about 10% of the total customer base, and only 13 of those customers had second penalties. Next would be changing the sewer rates for city of Geneva residents that receive St. Charles sewer. So there are 68 accounts on the north side of the city that are served by St. Charles per NIGA from the 1990s. And the properties that are in red are those 68 accounts. So these accounts, from the beginning, have always been charged city of Geneva rates. We then get billed from St. Charles, St. Charles rates based upon their Geneva usage. We just share that data. Now, because these rates are so different between what St. Charles offers and Geneva offers, there is 100% difference, which is located in the far right, bottom right, which shows an average 3/4 inch meter, 600 cubic feet for residential property. Geneva paid 2401, and St. Charles is going to be 4848. There is a large discrepancy now, and it's been going up. We've kind of seen it as what we're billing to what they're actually charging us. So the reason why I'm asking this change is to put a section in the code that would allow us to bill these residents the St. Charles code instead of the city of Geneva code, so we can recoup the entire cost, and it's not that the other residents of the city of Geneva are paying for that difference between those two rates. Next would be private fire service and cross-connect fees. So currently, these fees are billed on an annual basis. Private fire is billed $90 or $180, depending on residential or commercial, on an annual basis, or $15 for cross-connect. My proposal is to bill it on a monthly basis. We also have a proposal to add the fee that is charged by the third-party provider into code. Right now, it's not in code at all, but they do charge, I believe, $25 if I'm correct, for the cross-connect process. Reason why I'm asking for this is a change in customers, especially when ownership changes. So we do have a lot of people that, not a lot, we have some people that will, let's say, move the month before they're actually billed, or they move the month they're billed, and then they leave, so then really, they're paying for this in advance, so they're paying for this other customer to have this benefit of these services. So making it a monthly basis, or monthly fee, would be much easier, plus, it would also reduce the phone calls, because every year, we get the same call. "What is this fee? I don't know what this is. Please explain this to me again." Because again, it's only annual, you're not going to remember what it is. So to make it easier, we'd like to just bill it 750 a month for private fire residential, 1550 for private fire for commercial, and $2 for cross-connect per month, which is actually an increase from the current code of 15 up to 24. That also would reduce the manual billing process that we currently have right now, which can lead to errors. So next is just kind of a cleanup section, nothing really crazy, but at least we kind of want to go over it. The NSF fees. Currently, the code indicates that a non-sufficient funds would be a return check. Obviously, with automation today and ACHs, we push auto-debit a lot, and that's the one thing we want to add to the code as well, because there is a cost to that, because we do pay the bank $7.80 for a return check, and then the staff time to send out that letter that says you did, you know, that your check was not made whole, and also the postage and the envelope as well. So we're looking just to kind of, just make that a little bit more succinct. Second is remove the summer month definition. We've not used summer months in years for electric utility, and we're not using the future rates, so we'd like to remove that. And then lastly, would be to clean up the organizational structure, so change from Finance Manager to Finance Director, and change from Finance Division to Finance Department, which changed in July of 2020. Give me a moment. And lastly, would be billing cycles. This is not a change in city code, this is just a change in process. So back in the day, you can see my picture of the guy out there in the snow, Public Works had three meter readers that would walk or drive and read meters each month. Walk up to the house, read the actual meter, type it into a handheld, you know, go back to Public Works, and then download the data. Public Works, or yeah, or back in the day, I do have that too, the written down portion. And then Public Works staff, if it was read wrong, would have to go back out and read it again to make sure it's right, or if the read was really high, they'd double-check something. Now, looking at 2023, you know, 99.99% of the reads are all erted. So now, city staff has access to reads on a daily basis and an hourly basis. We can see things like high usage, if the meter's not running anymore, so we don't need to do multiple billing cycles. A daily file is downloaded for the billing software, Public Works is sent if the reads aren't coming to the database correctly. So that's why we're proposing to move to two billing cycles. Currently, we have four billing cycles, bill date of the 15th, 22nd, 30th, and 6th. These cycles are based upon physical location. Again, it goes back to the fact that everyone was walking a route, and you had to be somewhat close to each other. My proposal is to go to two billing cycles, which would be cycle one and cycle four the 15th of the month, cycle two and three and the 30th of the month. We would communicate this to the residents. It would allow the utility biller, instead of doing the same thing week after week, to have a week off in there as well, to also be able to do other special projects, and also, you know, talking through Public Works, they're okay with, you know, we're doing shut-offs every other week instead, or they're meter-reading every other week. So we think this would be a good way to just kind of make our processes a little simpler and just be able to move ahead. So with that, does anyone have any questions? Before I send it to Bob.
Questions for Director Cruz.
Oh, who is?
Mr. Bruno, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rita. Remember, I said thinking on my feed makes me look stupid up here, so I'm probably going to ask stupid questions. First of all, I didn't realize we have an opt-out option.
Yes, we do.
For electrically-readed red meters.
Both for water and electric, yes.
Is there a reason for that? People just don't like it? Is it Big Brother-type stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we can't just install them?
There haven't been that many, so we really haven't gone the direction of forcing anybody to do it. There's probably a handful that we have been working with the customers on to just, if they're absolutely against it, and some people really are, I mean, they've really voiced their concern, and so we've worked with them on doing this. So we've had it for quite a while, this extra fee, that if people didn't want to do it, they would be charged for the manual read.
Okay. I'd be happy increasing that fee, I suppose.
And to clarify, it's not increasing the fee, it's adding it to, right now, it's only in the water section, correct?
Yes.
So it's adding it to the electric side as well, because we have some customers who ironically have an ert for their water service, but don't have an ert for their electric service. And currently, the code only allows us to charge that extra fee on the water side, so what we're proposing is that it would be either side, but it would still only be one fee per property.
Got it. Let's see. Maybe not pertinent to what you're proposing, but do we know why there's the disparity in water fees? Do they just do a bad job of, are they trying to conserve water or disincentivize water use in St. Charles that their fees are?
No, they just, they needed to raise their rates. You know, when we were not raising rates after 19, they were raising their rates as well. Last year, they raised, I think it was, one was 12%, one was 9%, I don't remember which. So they have been raising their rates far faster than we have.
Hmm. That's quite a disparity. Let's see. Okay, this is probably a dumb question. Private fire service?
Sure. So fire service has been in the code for as long as I've been superintendent and even before then, so what it does is it pays for the extra capacity for the water mains to be able to service in case there is a fire.
Oh, sprinkling?
It's sprinkling, yes.
Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you. Let's see. That's it so far. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Following up on what Alderman Bruno asked, the cross-connect, is that from domestic water to the sprinkler system? Is that the cross-connect we're talking about?
Sure. It's a combination. It's residential customers who do have irrigation systems that have to have a backflow preventer on them. We also have a few residential properties that do have fire suppression systems in them, so they're required also to have a backflow preventer on them. This is per the Illinois Plumbing Code, and we're required to monitor it and make sure everybody's in compliance with testing on an annual basis through the IEPA. And then there's also business ones that are required, whether it be a fire service or the hospital or industrial customers. So it's a range of uses.
And what was the fee on that for the annual inspection?
Sure. What we, the $25 fee had been the charge since the program was incepted in 1989. What we did is when we brought a vendor on board to manage the cross-connection program, they will charge a $10 fee when the plumber goes ahead and submits the test results to them, and then they track it. So we reduced it down to 15, our charge, because we still have to monitor the database, and if there are customers that don't comply, we have to then, you know, send a third letter, you know, phone calls, whatever it may be, to try and get them into compliance. That fee has not changed since 1989, so we're trying to recover our current costs.
So in other words, the residential customer or the commercial customer hire a licensed plumber to do the inspection, and they submit the paperwork to us?
That's correct.
That's the only thing we have to do, is have somebody review that paperwork?
Correct. Correct.
And then log it.
And log it, and then, yeah, and then go after the customers, and there's usually 50 to 100 that we have to, every single year, that we have to go back and track down and, yeah.
Sounds like you should raise that fee.
It's usually the same customers, too. It's frustrating, so.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I didn't have, oh, I did.
Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Burkhardt.
Thank you, Rita. Geneva customers who get the St. Charles sewer rates, so that dates back to, I'm sorry, sewer service. How long does that date back?
The 1990s.
Okay. And they don't have another option, right? I mean, they're served where they bought is served by St. Charles.
Yeah, because my assumption is that back in that day, maybe it was better for us to service them than St. Charles to put a line down for them.
Right. It was for the elevation of the area, the topography, that it was more cost-effective to go to St. Charles and have them service the sanitary at the time, so the NIGA with St. Charles was implemented then, so it would have been way too expensive to bring it over to Geneva.
Okay. Thank you. That's probably the only one, really, that gives me pause right off the bat. And then you said summer, under the cleaning-up slide, you said summer rates. We haven't used summer rates. What are summer rates, or what were they?
Years ago, the electric utility had summer rates. I don't remember when, maybe if you remember, but I don't know. There used to be summer and winter rates.
Oh, so it's in the code, and so you're just looking to eliminate it, since it's not used anymore?
Yeah, because right now, if you look at the code, you see there's two columns, and the summer rates are the same as the winter rates.
Okay.
So I'm just taking out the reference.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Continuing on? Oh, Mr. Kilburg.
The issue as it relates to sewer rates for those residents that are in my ward, how's that going to be processed or communicated? Because they'll see an increase in their bill, pretty sizable increase.
Since we have the addresses, I'll take the information from GIS, and we'll send a letter out to them and let them know that they'll see a change in their rates.
Okay. And if this is approved this evening, or when it comes before the council, when will it be implemented?
I'd probably implement it when we actually change the water rates for the entire city, which would be 515. So at least we can get ahead of them and let them know that it's coming.
You think, Bob, do you think the residents are aware of this, that their sewer is processed or handled by St. Charles? I mean, I don't, you know, I wonder if the realtor tells them this when they buy the whole?
Yeah, you know, we maintain the sanitary line itself, but yeah, I don't know if they have any idea.
It'd probably be a surprise to most of those residents than you assume?
Yeah. Be my assumption.
Okay. Okay. And essentially, what you're saying is we've been picking up the differential here. And how long has this been going on, that we've had this dramatic variation?
It started about four years ago, and we're just seeing it increasing. So we've, it wasn't so bad, and then it just started coming up again. You know, 19, we stopped our rates. They must have been increasing their rates. We started seeing the difference.
So this will be on a monthly basis for typical residents, this would be about $24 a month? Is this pushing $300 a year? Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Kusrock.
I guess, I'm just wondering if you guys have quantified what these all mean in terms of overall revenue for the fund? Between the deposits, you said was like $150,000 a year that we're waiving, the rates for the St. Charles sewer, all that, has that, I mean, has that been quantified?
The rates I did not quantify between the two. Like you said, I was not able to figure out the difference between those, that little bit of 13% that had the second penalty, so I don't know where, how much that is. I did not take it all, the total between penalties, one and penalty two was 150, but I don't know how much penalty two was, that we'd be taking away. From the utility deposit standpoint, that, it's very hard to quantify, because I don't know how many people are going to end up going to collections if this deposit isn't there to reduce their final bill. The positive is, is if it is a renter, we always have the landlord to go back to, to attempt to collect that fee, and also, a lot of times, we do send them to collections. We have now a very solid collection process in place, so we do send them to collections as soon as they make that threshold and hopefully collect it from there.
In terms of overall revenue, though, this would be kind of neutral, so to speak, right? This is more about housekeeping than increasing or decreasing anything for the bottom line.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on this topic? Thank you. Superintendent, welcome.
Okay. So I've got a couple here. One is going to be in regards to the future water and sewer rates, and if you remember back in January, this was presented to the city council based on the rate study that was conducted. These are the rates that you were given at the time in the study. They have not been changed. So let me go back. This is for the water usage rates, so in case you're not familiar with it, we bill three tiers. So the typical residential customer gets billed 0 to 1,500 cubic feet. They fall mostly into that. Then you've got, the next two tiers are usually hit when irrigation usage is going on, or you start to see more commercial, and then the last one is usually just the industrial customer. So that's the tiers and how the charges are computed. The base rates are based on the meter sizes, and then, so it's, this is just the set monthly fee that's being charged based on the meter size. Sewer rates are just two individual classifications. One is for non-industrial, and then the other one is for industrial users for the industrial pretreatment program. That's the additional amount that goes into the industrial customer. So those are the rates that were in the study there. And then these are also the base sewer charges that were in the study, also based on the meter size. So we're looking to implement these into Title IX. Last one is in regards to the sanitary sewer lateral lining and grouting program. We've seen more and more customers that are taking advantage of this program. However, when we implemented it, we really kind of didn't have a good feeling on how much the amount was going to be that the people were going to have to spend. So it's been working out really well. Customers are extremely happy with the results. Contractors are really doing a nice job in town. Haven't heard any complaints in regards to it. We currently reimburse up to a maximum of $5,000, and we're proposing to increase that up to a maximum of $10,000. We're seeing the majority of the costs range from $6,000 to $12,000, and the majority are under that $10,000. So we would like to increase that to $10,000, so. And I will leave it at that. Any questions?
We've been paying more than the current reimbursement, though, haven't we, on several of these?
No, I mean, we're, for the lining, if it comes in at, you know, let's say, $9,000, we have been reimbursing the five. The resident pays the remainder of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Caven.
Thank you. How many of these do we generally do in a year?
Sure. It's been steadily increasing. The first year, we had four. Last year, we had six. Currently, this year, I've had six, and then I have three right now that are waiting to be approved.
Okay.
So I expect to see it steadily increase.
In this reimbursement, it just comes out of the Water and Sewer Fund?
Yes, it comes out of the operating budget.
Is there any circumstance where you could see that there would be a large increase in the number of people that wanted to participate?
I could see that. I wasn't proposing to increase the budget. What I was going to do is, we have programs right now, there- What I was going to do is we have programs right now. There's there's the four programs. There's this one. There is the Lead Service Line Replacement Grant Program. There's the Overhead Sewer Grant Program. And then there's also a program to remove sump pump, or excuse me, remove foundation drains from the sanitary sewer and install a sump pump. So those are the four grant programs. Usually kind of goes in spurts which one is going to be used. So what I do is I usually will move money over and and if we need to use it for lining versus the overhead sewer.
If there was an increase in requests, do you know about what the threshold, like as far as numbers or total? Where it, could it get to the point where? I know you said you're just shifting money around, so you're not looking to increase the budget, but is there like a magic? If it were this number, is there like a magic number where you would go, well, at this point in time now, this is? We would need to increase the budget to keep up with the demand for the program.
Just calculated in my my head kind of quickly, I would say between 15 and 20. It'd be probably the most that we could we could do without increasing the budget.
Okay. Well, just thinking out loud, I mean, I I'm very happy that we're able to that that we're able to do this, but I don't know if there would be any. If you would want to put on cap of how or add in like a cap of how many we would be willing to do over the course of a year so you didn't get surprised by a bunch more, but I realize there's a process and application, so I'm sure you can kind of control how many are are happening. So I don't I don't have any problem with it, but I was curious if.
The program and the ordinance does state that it's it's based on the availability of things, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Maladra? Okay, great. Mr. Kilburg?
Yeah. What what if the, once they they start looking at the lateral lining and grouting, they decide that it's just more practical to replace the line completely? Can they apply the 10,000 toward that then?
We haven't been doing that. It's it's more of a, I guess, a policy decision. We we could if the city council decided they wanted to. We always thought that that was more of a major improvement to the home versus a rehabilitation. So I I you can go either way on it. I see where you're.
Band-aid, really, because it's probably going to be a reoccurring problem, so ultimately, probably replacing it makes sense. This is probably in a lot of our older neighborhoods and it's a lot of of tile, probably, right?
It is, but on the other hand, what the lining shows is that it it's a lot less disturbance. You've got a between a 50 and 100 year life to it. So it's it it kind of depends on what the customer would would like to do.
When you see people that have chronic sewer problem, it seems ultimately what they do is it's dug up and replaced.
I have been seeing, though, that if you if you want to replace it, because numerous customers have gone and gotten quotes for for both, by the time you get close to the street, if you have to go into the street, you're looking between 30 and 50,000.
No. Some insurance policies pick that up.
There are policies out there that if that I am aware of, that customers have asked me about, that they they could, you know, pay for coverage like that, so.
So.
But I don't think it's part of a typical insurance line. I think it's got to be specified.
Or you know your agent quite well.
There you go.
I just, I guess I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here for double dipping? And again, you don't need to give me an answer on that. I'm just saying I think there's.
You mean if, are you saying that if if somebody would go ahead and line it and then a few years later, they have an issue and they just say, fine, I'm just going to replace it?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
In other words, I'm saying it's possible that some, you know, an insurance claim could be.
Oh, I gotcha, okay.
Lining and grouting and then they submit it as a claim and it's on their policy and they get paid for it.
The only thing that we.
And now we pay for it.
Sure, sure. The the only thing that is in the program currently is that you, if the state would or the federal government would say, here's grant money that that is available if you wanted to use it through some program of theirs, that they cannot use that, so.
Yeah, I guess the possibilities of this is are minimal, but I just.
Yeah, it's it's typically it's it's somebody that is in dire need of of doing something to their sewer because they've they've got no choice.
But most of the time, when this comes into play, it's in our older neighborhoods, like east of the high school and.
Yeah, generally, or or.
Or west of East Side Drive.
It it could be anywhere from homes that are 1950s, 60s to older homes. So any any of them that were built with clay tile. Pardon?
When did they quit using tile?
Parts of Randall Square have have clay tiles still, so up to probably the the early 90s.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Bruno?
So when we originally talked about this and the sanitary sewer lining project of our public lines, my understanding was that we were incentivizing people to do this because of the infiltration into the lines from the storm waters, from the storm water and that there's somewhat of a return on on the investment here.
Correct, correct.
That's still true, correct?
It is, it is. That that's one of the the reasons for the program is because there is a, you know, an improvement to the the city system that hopefully it will eliminate the groundwater and and so we don't have to treat it. So there is a benefit to the city.
Right, so with that, the original discussion was that we're really at this like tipping point of our systems that the they get to a maximum capacity during rain events because of this infiltration and that this program is meant to help get some of the problem problem laterals taken care of. So are we videotaping to find these areas where we want or is this based on homeowner, slow flow or?
This is, okay, so this is just for homeowners that are having problems. We have not gone out to, when we line line our sewers, we haven't been going to the extent of also televising the sewer laterals at that time to see if there are problems because you're you're still running into that private property issue to where now we're having to go to each individual resident and really try to try to get them to to line their sewers. And it is just not something that we have been doing.
But you had flow meters on certain areas, right, that showed where we had probable issues?
Right, and so Geneva East was the the big example of of that. And what we did is we went ahead and grouted the the connections and then up to, I think, just like three feet inside the connection, so it's basically the connection to the city main. So we wanted to wait and see what that did before we ever wanted to go back and and, you know, suggest that people line their their private laterals, so.
So people that participate in this are probably having tree roots and things like that infiltrate their piping? Okay. Yeah, I guess I wish there was a way that we could track where where we needed it the most to improve the performance of the system as well and then reimburse more liberally with those cases rather than this seems to be just a case where we're going to help homeowners that have aging systems or maybe not the greatest original install to to help it out, so.
Yeah, and we still do have the flow meters installed and we do upload that data. It's just sometimes it's difficult to see what the difference is that we've made. It just is, depends on the ground saturation, the rain event, it's, but we are definitely making progress.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Bruno, forgive me, I did have your name down, sorry about that.
How's this build out? Does the homeowner pay for it and get reimbursed from the city?
Yes.
So they could double tip. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
So I guess before we.
Thanks, Bob, very much.
Close the items down, what we're trying to get here is feedback so that when we bring this to the to a regular committee of the whole, we understand kind of where the the council's leaning, whether, yes, we're looking to increase this, no, we're not. All of the items that Rita covered, do those all seem acceptable? I don't, again, we're not taking a vote tonight, but we would if there is any specific concerns or if we're like, rah rah, we'd like to hear that tonight before we bring it back to a regular committee of the whole meeting.
Mr. Kilburg?
As it relates to these anticipated sewer rate increases for those residents along Division, have we had a discussion ever with the city city of St. Charles in establishing our rates as it relates to those residents?
No.
I mean.
No, it's it's, no.
Well, I I guess I'm just saying, maybe maybe we should at least make an effort to to approach them and say, hey, we've got these 68 residents. We're going to essentially almost double their their sewer rates when when, if and when we pass this along. You know, the impact to the city of St. Charles overall is going to be dramatically less than what it's going to be to these residents at $300. Or we're collecting another $20,000 in sewer fees here that is sort of coming at them out of the clear blue. And I'm just saying, wouldn't it, wouldn't it at least be worth the effort to have a discussion with St. Charles and say, let's, let's, let's just, let's just work off of Geneva's rate since they're Geneva residents?
I I guess they're, you know, they have their costs for for treatment, so.
I think we'd have to look at the IGA because I, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but I also believe we have Geneva, we have St. Charles residents that are on Geneva's sewer as well. So so we have kind of, that's why we have the IGA and so I would have to look at what the language of that is.
So they've been underpaying compared to their their counterparts in St. Charles?
Correct.
So.
And I would also note, it's not just Division Street, it's also Gray.
Gray Street.
Yeah, and Howell, yeah. I mean, couldn't we negotiate something there where, in other words, we'll, those those residents that that we're supplying the sewer service, we're going to charge at the St. Charles rate and that the residents that are in Geneva, we're going to charge at the at the Geneva rate?
Right, like stuff.
I mean, I I I would think that that would be worth a negotiation. What?
A hostage exchange.
Yeah, there you go. With the Iranians.
Ms. Ruby, then Mr. Bruno. Dean, are you finished? Excuse me.
Well, I'm just saying. Who thinks that would be worth worthy of at least exploring?
I think we should allow Ms. Dawkins and Mr. Van Gescam to review the IGA and then provide some additional information prior to our committee of the whole meeting so that we have a better picture.
When when they're looking at that, if they could tell us the the number of houses in each, it might be supposed to be the same and be a wash.
Yeah, I don't think.
It's not, okay.
No, not at all.
It's far less than the other side.
Okay, didn't know. Thought I'd ask that, but if you know it, that's fine.
Well, then they can determine the rate that they want us to charge.
Ms. Ruby?
I just was going to say, I I think that's a great suggestion, just to at least look into it and it will be a big impact on some residents in our ward, so I appreciate you thinking of them and coming, you know, trying to think creatively and. My one question that Rita, you might be able to answer right now, I I'm just curious. Obviously, we don't know how St. Charles, what they use for their billing system, but I I'm worried about that, that they may not have the capability to charge a different rate to a different, you know, to that specific block of addresses.
I don't know the answer because they're literally implementing new utility billing software last week.
So do we have that ability?
We have that ability, yes. That's why I did propose this. I know that we have the ability to to bill their rates in our software.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. The I'm on board with with all of it. But I think, yeah, those those 60 residents deserve a little attention somehow, whether it's negotiating something with St. Charles or giving, increase it over time, just, you know, instead of just hitting with a full increase. Something, I don't know, but yeah, that's a little harsh for, I think, for a handful of residents. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Kozrock, then Ms. Ruby again?
I'd just say in terms of feedback for Stephanie, that from my point of view, I thought Rita's changes were all reasonable and appropriate. And then I guess in terms of the water and the sewer rates increases, I'm going to have to go back and re-watch that rate study meeting, so I wasn't prepared. I I didn't do that tonight. But I don't know if I have any feedback on that currently, but I'll be happy to do my homework before the next meeting.
And I would just note that the rates that are being proposed is the direction that the council asked for us to go in because I, there was a choice of no increase, a one-time big increase or kind of a smoothed type of increase. So it is the smooth increase.
That sounds right. I mean, I don't think there's going to be an issue. I just want to make, you know, kind of reserve that. Thank you.
Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. So in regard to the rate increases, if we could just try to publicize this as much as possible, hopefully people will be educated and understand that, you know, this is all part of our long-term plan and not feel angry or blindsided when these incremental steps happen. I know that there's only so much we can do there. We can't make people read. My other question is on this, the sanitary program. So currently, for the overhead sewer program, if I recall correctly, we pay 50% up to $10,000?
No, we paid 100% up to 10,000 and then 50% for the next 5,000, so a maximum of $12,500.
Okay, all right. So I guess I was just looking at these numbers and wondering if maybe it should be, you know, half as opposed to, you know, if we're covering 100% of it, if it's, well, we're very likely covering 100% of it. But maybe that's okay. I I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm kind of, I see both sides of this one.
Relating to that, we had a flurry of activity in '21. How many apps did we have or an estimate in '22? In other words, has that become less of an issue in the last year since we we didn't have a an eight or nine inch rain?
Exactly. I believe we had about 20 applications at that time that that did go ahead through with the overhead sewer. We've had a few here and there, but not nearly, well, I shouldn't say not nearly.
Following the storm in May of '21, was it, or '20?
Twenty, twenty, yeah. It did, like I said, it it comes and goes depending on rain events.
Well, and then we've remediated some of the issues over there, too, so the likelihood of it being an ongoing problem have been reduced.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Berghardt?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the attention paid to this. It looks like there'd be a lot of efficiencies for staff and so I appreciate you spending the time to try to look at this with a modern lens and figure out, you know, some of the stuff we've been doing just historically that doesn't really make sense anymore with the way we pay our bills. The only thing I I I'd have trouble supporting the the increase for the Geneva residents on the St. Charles sewers if it comes back, that they're just going to have their bills doubled, so I do hope some of that can be worked out on that issue. Thanks.
I was just conferring with Stephanie with respect to when the committee of the whole meeting might take place regarding this matter. It would likely be April the 3rd. It could be as early as the 20th, but it's unlikely, which would be, of course, next week. So. Anyone else for either the superintendent or the director or Ms. Dawkins? Anything else, you two? Anything else you two would like to present or share? Ms. Dawkins, anything else? Again, no action. We appreciate the feedback. Onto new business. Anyone? About anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the special committee of the whole meeting. Mr. Marx makes the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.